I don't know. Yeah, just like James Bond. Doesn't, it's like Goldfinger.
I'd now like to call this June 16th, 2011 Cookville City Council Meeting to Order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, item one, consider approval of agenda as presented. Is there changes to the?
We need to remove item 11.
All right, we have a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to old business. Item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on June 2nd, 2001.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item three, consider on second and final reading ordinance 110609, amending the budgets for the various funds, departments of the city of Cookville for the fiscal year ended 6/30/2011. Sponsors, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, since first reading on this ordinance, there's been no changes to these amendments. And I would recommend your approval and be happy to answer any questions you might have about them.
All right, we have a motion for approval.
Motion approved.
All right. Any questions, comments from the council?
No.
Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
On to new business. Item four, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 110610, providing a tax levy for the 2011-2012 fiscal year. Sponsors, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance will establish the tax levy for 2011-12. This year is a little bit different. We are in a, Putnam County is in a reappraisal year this year. And our current tax rate, the 2010 rate was 87 cents. This ordinance basically says that we're going to adopt a tax rate that is either the 87 cents we have today or the certified tax rate if it's different than that 87 cents. The state of Tennessee will calculate that certified tax rate. It'll be the 1st of July before we know what that number is. And this ordinance will allocate out whatever that certified tax rate is, round it up to the nearest whole cents. Because right now, the preliminary rate that we have from the state is .8254. If that number were to hold true, we will round that up to 83 cents. And it would be allocated out somewhat in this scenario here with 72 cents to the general fund, 6 cents to the debt service fund, 4 cents to economic development, and 1 cent to quality of life. That in total would generate roughly $5,846,000 for the various funds. But I would recommend approval.
Do you have a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion from the council? Mr. Davidson, could you, there's been so much talk out there about tax appraisals and that sort of thing, and their people's property value going up. Could you kind of explain how everyone is thinking, well, my property value's going up, so my taxes are going to go up automatically? Well, could you kind of explain how that's not necessarily the case?
It's not necessarily the case.
Not necessarily.
Everyone's appraisals, on average, it appears that the appraisals inside the cities went up on average by 5%. Some people's appraisals may have gone up a little higher, some a little lower. But in essence, in order to generate the same revenue, using the same properties that were on the tax rolls last year, in order to generate the same revenue from property tax that we received last year, based on those new appraisals, they lower or increase the tax rate depending on what those appraisals are. So in this case, the appraisals went up approximately 5%. So the tax rate itself is going to be lowered so that, in essence, everyone's tax, property tax, should be close to the same amount that they paid last year. Now, if your appraisal was more than 5%, then you are going to pay just a little bit higher property tax. If your appraisal was slightly lower than that 5% average, then your rate might be just a little bit lower. That's about the best I can do.
Well, I mean, that helps because everybody just automatically, I think, assumes, once my value goes up, taxes are going up with it. The value might go up, but the rate may go down, so they.
They kind of balance out. But if your appraisal went up by that 5%, then you should see pretty close to what you paid last year in terms of your property tax.
Anybody has any questions, they can call you? Just kidding.
Rhonda Chaffin at the Assembly Office.
It was my understanding that when they do the appraisal, then the state sets the rate so that it's basically revenue neutral.
It's revenue neutral to the city.
Then it's up to the local governments to adjust it if they want to raise the taxes. But the readjustment at the beginning is supposed to be revenue neutral.
It's revenue neutral, based on the properties that were on the tax roll last year. And any new properties coming on the tax roll this year, we will see, you know, additional revenue from that, based on the new certified tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Any other questions?
Yes, I'm curious to know why they're, in the new proposal, there's nothing in there for State Street Aid.
State Street Aid, last year we had 4 cents allocated to State Street Aid. And this year, we're recommending that we reallocate 2 cents of that, essentially 2 cents of that, up to the general fund, and 2 cents of it to our debt service fund. That's going to help continue to build our debt service fund so that we have adequate debt capacity. And the general fund would see that growth off of that 2 cents that we allocate to the general fund. And additional, the revenue from the property tax, that 2 cents, would help just fund the operations of the general fund. Now, last year, that 4 cents was used for paving, for additional paving in the city streets. What we've got recommended, when we get to the appropriations budget, you'll see we're recommending a transfer of $250,000 out of the general fund over to State Street Aid, which will help basically accomplish the same thing, be able to pave additional streets or have that extra $250,000 for paving.
That 250 is pretty close to being equivalent to what the 4 cents was last year on State Street.
I think last year was 2, roughly 260,000, something like that, I think so. Close, yeah. But we had discussed reallocating that 4 cents out of State Street Aid over to the general fund and the debt service fund.
Anything else?
No.
All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item five, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance 110611, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service, nonprofit, and charitable organizations for the 2011-2012 fiscal year. Sponsors, Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this year, we had a little different approach with the nonprofits. We had an application process that we asked them to complete. And we went through that, tried to summarize it for all of you all, gave you all the entire packets that they submitted to us as well. But this year's nonprofits recommending a total of $681,031. That's a combination nonprofits and other governmental joint ventures that we're involved with. Just to point out a couple of the, some of the changes from last year's funding for the nonprofits. The Highlands Initiative would have received an additional, a total additional $50,000. That would be a transfer from the Economic Development Fund. The library, Putnam County Cookville Library, would receive an additional $28,443 over what they received last year. The airport requests additional $5,000 from the governmental entities that supports the airport for the airshow that they're putting on this year. There are a couple of decreases in this budget. Clean Commission would be a decrease from last year's funding of $2,270, a decrease for Kids Putnam of $1,000. Some new funding this year would be the Court Appointed Special Advocates, 1,500, Child Advocacy Center of 4,000, and the Children's Museum, 1,500. And then another joint venture between the city, the county, Monterey and Baxter, or not Baxter, Allgood. It's $7,244, that would go to the Cookville-Putnam County Rail Trail Authority. And that's to help operate and fund the potential, the rail trail that we're looking at building from Cookville to Allgood right now, that first segment of that. Again, a total of 681,000. Just to point out, I'm going to go through each one of these, if you'll bear with me. The actual funding for each one of them, the library is a total of 325,000. The Putnam County Senior Citizen Center, Cookville Senior Citizen Center, 47,530. The airport, 33,000 total, with 5,000 for the airshow. $80,000 in total over to the chamber with, oh, I hit, I'm sorry, 50,000 designated for the Highlands Initiative Phase II, with that 50,000 coming out of our Economic Development Fund. The Emergency Management Agency would receive $25,400. The Cityscape, 32,417, with 15,306 of that designated for the Fall Fund Fest. $18,608 for the Cookville Arts Council. And 1,901 for the Cumberland Arts Society. $48,589 for the Tennessee Rehabilitation Center. 9,000 for the Cookville-Putnam County Clean Commission. $11,407 for Genesis House. $11,407 for Helping Hands of Putnam County. $10,000 for WCTE-TV. $2,377 for the H.J. Stevens Center. $6,000 for Kids Putnam. $10,000 for the Imagination Library. $1,901 for Upper Cumberland Human Resources, which would be designated for Meals on Wheels Program. $7,500 for the Upper Cumberland Drug Court. $1,500 for the Court Appointed Special Advocates Program. $1,500 for the Cookville Children's Museum. $4,000 for the Upper Cumberland Child Advocacy Center. And that's $7,244 for the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Authority, for a total of $681,031. And I'd recommend your approval.
Second. Second. Just wondering if this is a typo where it says Section 22, that's 7,244, and then it goes down and it says Section 22, that this ordinance shall take effect. Do you see where I'm reading?
Section 22, this, oh, it says Section 22.
I think.
It is, it's a typo, Section 21, 22, Section 23.
Okay.
What that should be.
So, okay.
Yes. That this order's take effect July 1st.
Probably shouldn't be a different section at all, it's just the whole ordinance.
Yeah, I think it looked like it just returned and it was there. So, just to make sure to point that out when we get ready to.
Yeah, I'll make that correction before next, our next meeting.
You must be a school teacher.
I must be a school teacher. Mustn't be grading papers right now. Mike, sorry about that.
I just have a comment. Having been involved in funding nonprofits for quite a while, I just want to make a comment and say that this template that the city administration has came up with to determine funding for nonprofits is excellent. It can, it maybe can even be better of what Melinda's been telling me. So, it's putting, it takes, I really like it because it takes, a lot of times, when I've participated this before, funding for nonprofits has been very subjective. It's been a very subjective process. And it, and this puts it a little bit more pencil and paper, a little bit more objective, and it makes it, for me, it makes it easier. And I just appreciate all the hard work that went into helping design this template to fund these things, so, thank you.
I definitely second that. This, I feel like we've always done a good job with this, but it kind of fine-tuned it a little bit more this year. And also, I think it caused the agencies to also really look at themselves as they requested funds. And I'm very proud of the city of Cookville for doing this. And of course, it is the taxpayers' money, and it should go back to the taxpayers.
I do. I think the application, Melinda put that together, it is, it is great. We've got some good information out of those nonprofits, and we'll be getting continuing information each quarter from them, we request quarterly reports from them.
Yeah, I think that's great.
It's funny how the 600 and something thousand is just a percentage, small percentage of the total budget, but yet it's, we spent the most time on it, didn't we?
We spent a lot of time on those.
So, thank you. Anything else from council? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item six, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 110612, making appropriations for the various funds, departments, and agencies of the city of Cookville for the fiscal year 2011-2012.
Again, bear with me, I have a number of slides, not quite as many as the work sessions that we've been involved in. I do have a number of slides, I'll try to go through them fairly quickly. Stop me at any point, and I'll try to answer any questions that you have. But again, this ordinance will appropriate money for the various funds and departments of the city. Just to give you a summary, in the general fund, we have operating recurring revenues of $21,803,96 budgeted. We also are looking at a capital outlay note, which will be used to fund various capital equipment for departments. We have a contribution from the hospital of $650,000, that'd be for the improvements we're going to do to Seventh Street. Transfer ends from other funds, $7,244 from Quality of Life and $50,000 from Economic Development Fund. And that gives us total operating revenues transfers of $22,267,640 for the general fund. Now, we're going to, the operating expenditures, recurring expenditures, $20,847,221. Inside of, in the various general fund departments, we have capital budgeted for $1,478,200. $650 of that is what's budgeted for the Seventh Street improvements. We also have transfer outs to other funds for the tree board, $3,000. $64,220 to the Animal Control Fund, and then $250,000 to the State Street Aid Fund, which would be used for the additional paving. So total expenditures of $22,642,641. We're actually budgeting a deficit of $375,000, a little over $375,000. That'll come out of our fund balance right now, our fund balance projected to end this fiscal year, right around 7, 7.1 million. That $375,000 come out of that $7 million, will be around 6.7 and 6.8 at the end of June of 2012. Again, total revenue, and you can see the fund balance, $7,182,000. So total available funds, $29,449,000. Just to point out some of the things about, in the general fund, different things we're doing. The capital, again, $1,478,000, $650 of that is for Seventh Street. We have departmental equipment of $828,200. Again, funding for that capital will be $650,000 from the CRMC, which will help offset the Seventh Street improvements. $480,000 capital outlay note, and then $348,200 from the general fund revenues and reserves out of the general fund. We also have budgeted for our employees a 1.5% cost of living increase. The changes to our longevity plan is in this budget as well. Got additional money budgeted for fuel, as we all know, prices at the pump are 3.40, 3.50 a gallon. So we have additional money in the budget for fuel. Utilities for the city, we've got additional money budgeted there, $77,800 for utilities for facilities, streetlights, traffic signals. Total transfers to other funds are $317,000. And then we also have in this budget two new positions. One is a stormwater inspector and a GIS position in our planning department. This budget will allocate by department, $2,531,000 for the general government, and $35,000 in capital budget for the general government. That would be traffic, potential software we may have to purchase for our traffic and court system. We have the $681,031 for nonprofits. And Police Department, $7,318,383 for operating expenses. And $267,200 for capital. $3,976,650 for the Fire Department, $45,000 in capital in the Fire Department. Leisure Services is $1,40108 for operating expenses. And capital in Leisure Services is $31,000. Parks and Maintenance has $1,167,518 budget for operating expenditures and $90,500 in capital. Public Works is $2,653,530 and $860,000 in capital. I've got the $650,000 for Seventh Street budgeted in the Public Works Department. So that's, $650,000 of that, $860 is for Seventh Street. Planning and Code is $1,118,134 for operating expenses and $149,500 for capital. $60,000 of that $149,500 is the upgrades to the Microsoft Office to get us all of our licenses current. Then we have the transfer $64,220 to the Animal Control Fund, $3,000 to the Tree Board Fund, and $250,000 to the State Street Aid Fund. For total operating expenditures in the general fund, $22,642,641. And you can see this summary here is just a beginning fund balance, 7.1 million, is what we've got projected. Spending into that fund balance, $375,000. We should be somewhere at the end of next year, 6.8 million or so in our reserves. That's the general fund. I'm just going to keep moving right along. State Street Aid, and I'm just going to be as brief as possible, has estimated revenues of $712,000, a transfer in of $250,000, with expenditures budgeted of $1,094,250. I did make the change today that I mentioned to you earlier, $159,000 in capital, which would be to, for the intersection improvements at Walnut and Jackson and Old Bridge Road. That was something we thought would get done this fiscal year by June 30th, but it's not going to happen. So I've put that money into the 2011-12 budget. But again, total expenditures transfers for State Street Aid, $1,094,250. Our solid waste fund has estimated revenue of $1,453,500, with estimated expenditures of $1,617,140. Spending into that fund balance, $163,000, and leaving us with right around half a million dollar fund balance for solid waste. We've had that fund balance down as low as $300,000 in the past, so that's nothing unusual. It's a $500,000 is a good, healthy fund balance for solid waste. Animal Control Fund, estimated revenue is $184,320, with estimated expenditures of $193,730. This is a fund we operate as lean as we can, it's on a shoestring budget. They have a projected fund balance at the end of next year of $46,000. Our Economic Development Fund has projected fund balance of $7 million at the end of this year. And the reason it has such a high fund balance is, back in December, we issued bonds, the Build America Bonds is what we issued to help, which will help fund the Business Park and the new road out at the Business Park. So those funds will be spent throughout the next year, year and a half, to develop that road and the infrastructure out there. So we have estimated revenue of $7,226,000. A big part of that is actually the county's half of their commitment to building that road as well. So between our beginning fund balance, the estimated revenue, $7.2 million, we have expenditures of $14,500,000. We also have that $50,000 transfer, which will be going to the Highlands Initiative. So we're actually looking at decreasing that fund balance, $6,828,000. But it will leave us with a $200,000 fund balance when we finish the Business Park property, that infrastructure and the road.
You're basically just spending the bond proceeds.
We're just spending the bond proceeds and what the county, their half of their commitment to this, yes. The Quality of Life Fund has an estimated revenue of $2,259,000, with estimated expenditures of $2,432,248, plus that $7,244 transfer to the general fund, which will be used to support the Rail Trail Authority. The estimated revenue here is primarily from the grants we have to build the rail trail, that trail from Cookville to Allgood, wherever we can get it. But that's the estimated revenue we'll receive as we spend those grant proceeds. Projected fund balance at the end of 2012 is $151,000. The next fund is our Debt Service Fund, which is where we pay the interest and principal on all of our general obligation bonds and notes. We have a beginning fund balance of $6.8 million projected. We have estimated revenues of $2,985,000, with expenditures estimated at $3,991,000. We have a budgeted deficit of a little over a million dollars. I budget this fund, a lot of, some of the debt we have is variable rate debt. I budget it at 4.5%. For the last year and a half to two years now, the rate we've been paying on that is basically a half a percent to 3/4 of a percent. I don't see that rate changing anytime soon. At least, that's not the forecast right now by the bond fund. And so, in the past, even though I budgeted a deficit, we have always added to the fund balance. I think the highest that I've seen that variable rate debt get has been somewhere, is averaging around 3% to 3.5% prior to the last couple of years, when the bottom just fell out of it. But anyway, we budgeted on 4.5%. If it comes in at the less than 1%, that will just go back to the fund balance, which will help increase our debt capacity going forward. The Water Quality Fund has estimated revenue of $13,866,000. They have estimated expenditures of $19,36,000, looking at spending into their cash reserves of $2.7 million, leaving them with a little over $7 million in projected cash reserves at the end of 2012. Electric Department has estimated revenues of $58,130,000. They are looking at issuing bonds in the next month or so to construct a substation that's projected at $4 million. And looking, have budgeted expenditures of $62,655,000. When you add back depreciation expense, as far as a cash item, we're looking at increasing their cash by $1.6 million or so, to have a projected cash reserve at the end of 2012 of over $10 million for the electric fund. The Gas Department has estimated revenues of $11,566,000, with estimated expenditures of $11,426,000. Again, when you take into the account the effect of the depreciation as a non-cash item, add that back, we're looking at adding back to our fund balance or to the cash reserves, $780,000 next year, with a projected balance, cash reserve balance of 11.7 million, a little over, almost 11.8 million for the Gas Department. Our Employee Insurance Fund has estimated revenues of $3,408,000, with estimated expenditures of $3,509,000. eight thousand, with estimated expenditures of three million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven seventy-two. Right now, we're budgeting a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar deficit. That'll come out of the fund balance, dropping it down to three million, projected three million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Again, that fund, year and a half ago, was at four and a half million, and we're down to three point seven. Claims are still, they're still extremely high, so we're trying to keep an eye on it as best we can, and looking at getting our insurance group back together to keep going over what we can do for the two thousand and twelve plan year. But again, we have a budgeted deficit, again, of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand in the employee health insurance fund. Our workers' comp liability fund has estimated revenues of five hundred and twenty-two thousand, with estimated expenditures of five hundred and twenty thousand. That fund has a projected fund balance, seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars next year. Customer service department is funded by the utilities, electric, gas, water, sanitation. They have estimated revenues of one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, with estimated expenditures of one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand. So whatever we spend, the expenses incurred in customer service are allocated out to the utilities, and they reimburse that. Some of our smaller funds, the drug fund, estimated revenue of forty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, with estimated expenditures of thirty-seven thousand, leaving us with a projected fund balance of forty-three thousand dollars at June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. And their tree board fund, estimated revenue of five thousand and fifty dollars, with estimated expenditures of eighty-nine hundred and seventy-five. Spending into that fund balance, almost four thousand dollars, dropping it down to forty-seven hundred dollars. And I guess the last one we have is the Cookeville Regional Medical Center. Estimated revenues, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. Estimated total expenditures, three hundred million. Their projected cash reserves, they're looking at spending into their cash reserves, dropping it from seventy million down to fifty million by the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. And I think that's the last slide I have for you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you've got about any of those funds. And I'll stop there.
Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Questions?
No. Just a statement. When we go through this and hear us reading it, for anybody who's listening to this, it's, this is painstakingly done. The department heads, Mike Davidson and Jim Shipley, and then the council itself, no rock goes unturned. I mean, we look at every single thing, and I'm very, I've always been very impressed with the way the city, the city of Cookeville handles their finances, and we had some lean years a couple of years ago, and still pulling out of that. The city of Cookeville has maintained a good balance and a good reputation, and they didn't, you know, we don't scream hooray when they balance with the bank like I did today, you know? And believe me, my expenditures aren't like this. But a lot of work goes into this. Appreciate it from all standpoints.
Seems like that's all we've done since January, is look at the budget, so all of us, all the department heads.
Yeah, yeah. Serious business.
Anyone else? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. All right, on to item number seven. Consider resolution number one-one-zero-six-zero-six, expressing intent to reimburse expenditures of certain public works projects from proceeds of notes, bonds, or other indebtedness to be issued by the city. Sponsors, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Again, Mayor and council members, the electric department is planning on issuing four million dollars in bonds in the next month or so. That four million dollars will be used to build the substation, and this resolution will allow us, if we incur any expenses prior to those proceeds, receiving the bond money, any reserves, any money spent out of the electric department reserves for those expenses, we could reimburse ourselves from those bond proceeds, and this resolution allows us to do that, so that we can keep the reserves at the level Tony needs them at. And then later, next month, I think our first meeting in July, I'll be bringing the details resolution about that bond to you. But this allows us to reimburse us for anything we might have to pay upfront before we get the bond proceeds.
All right, thank you. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Well, council is the second, because we both did it.
You're third.
Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. On to item eight. Consider approval of agreement between Putnam County and City of Cookeville relative to the Putnam County Library. Sponsors, Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, this is an agreement that really, I think, was mandated on the county by their auditors, that there was no actual record of a joint venture, and I could have sworn there was one back there somewhere, but nobody could find it. So this will be, this formally establishes that joint venture between the city and county. And in Article III of this agreement, it states that the budget of the library will be funded by both the city and county, and the city and county shall determine the amount of funding based on the annual request and needs of the county of the library in the same manner as we allocate funds to all other city or county departments, offices, agencies, et cetera. In Article IV, it establishes that the county and the city, county commission and the city council will appoint the members to the library board, county commission will appoint four, and the city council will appoint three. And in Article V, the employees of the library are county employees. And in Article VI, it states that the county shall have the full responsibility of maintaining the land and the buildings. And that's basically the essence of this agreement. I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can.
All right, we have a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
Mr. Shipley?
Yes, ma'am.
Go back to the slide before that slide, please. How does the city appoint its three members to the library board?
City council appoints them.
Okay.
I'm not sure that the city council has ever appointed anybody to the library board.
Well, that's what I was just thinking.
Just to the Upper Cumberland Regional Library Board, you had one appointment.
Right.
But we're talking about the library board that meets once a month?
Yes.
Okay. I was just wondering.
All right, any other questions?
Is the, is the board comprised of four, I mean, how do you know who's the county appointees and the city appointees? If we...
They're actually in the, in the agreement, and the county, the county members are Greg Richter, Dr. Peter Lee, Dr. Gerald Barker, and Ruth Ann Wilbrae. And the city's representatives, even though we've never actually appointed them, they have been designated. Yeah, we did Marla, but Susan Pogue and Alma Anderson.
I knew I was.
Yeah.
Just to clear that up, but...
Is there a term, or are these staggered appointments? How is this?
They're staggered.
Three-year terms.
Yeah, and it looks like our three will expire in June of next year.
Good, all right. That's all I need to know. Just was curious how it was going to fall, fall into our, into our hands.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to item nine. Consider reappointment to the Upper Cumberland Regional Library Board. Sponsors, Mayor Swallows. Marla Williams' term as Putnam County's representative, the Upper Cumberland Regional Library Board has expired, and I recommend her approval for reappointment.
So moved.
All right, any questions?
I do have a comment. Marla, I've worked with Marla on the library board, and she's been a very consistent and very committed member, and we're grateful that she's willing to serve again, or serves the more.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to item ten. Consider approval of agreement for GIS software. Sponsors, Mr. Jeff Littrell.
Mayor and city council, I'm seeking approval tonight for the city to enter into the ESRI's Small City Municipal Government, Municipality and County Government Enterprise License Agreement. The enterprise license agreement will give the city unlimited license for the ESRI software, which will expand, enhance our current GIS mapping capabilities. Nothing else.
It's not working very good. Hope it works better than that.
Anyway, cost is thirty-five thousand dollars per year, and the way we would like to pay for it's the general fund, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, and the three utilities, seventy-five hundred dollars each, and this is a three-year, it's a three-year contract. Like to ask for your approval and be happy to answer any questions.
We're going to incorporate those changes I suggested, correct?
Yes, sir, I've got them.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Littrell. All right, we skip item eleven. On to item twelve. Hold a public hearing relative to the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Sponsors, Ms. Melinda Kiefer.
Mayor and council, thank you for letting us use this time to stand as our public hearing for our annual solicitation from the Department of Justice for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Program. We receive an allocation annually for this particular grant. It does not require a match. We do split the funding with accounting. Over the past several years, we've used these funds to purchase such things as patrol rifles and laptops, night vision goggles, bulletproof vests, things like that. This year, the sheriff's department has indicated they would like to spend their portion on radios. You know, there's a large bandwidth change taking place, and a lot of radios are having to be changed out. And the city of Cookeville Police Department has indicated that they would like to spend their portion on laptops and possibly patrol sidearms, to upgrade those to a new standard in technology. The grant is actually not due until July. We are required to have a public hearing thirty days before submission of this grant. Be glad to answer any questions.
All right, motion for approval?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions?
Why do we have a public hearing?
Well, it's required by the federal government.
It's required, but why is it required? We have all kinds of grants that we just phone vote, and it's done.
Right, right.
I'm just curious.
It's part of the process they do with this grant. They also ask, you know, that you post it publicly. We did that in the newspaper. It's really just to let the public know what's going on with this allocation. States are given the money, and then it comes down to the counties, and we split it up from there. It's not a huge grant. Our portion of it is a little over six thousand dollars, but it does help a lot with equipment pieces. So I think the intent is just make the public aware.
Well, and the fact that it is no match, it's, it's nice money.
Probably not a bad idea, making the public aware, to be honest with you.
Yeah, let them know that it's coming to us.
Yep, and we don't have to match it.
Yeah.
Okay, is that by no? Okay.
We'll ask next meeting if you remember that.
I made a vote, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Ready?
All vote?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Melinda. Okay, now, we're at the portion of the meeting, we have the hearing of the citizens and our delegates, but first, we have, we've been doing a little research, I say we. Mr. Rader has been doing a tremendous amount of research into a few hot topics lately, one being the quarry and the history there, and I think Mr. Rader has some history to go through with everyone here.
All right. At a couple of council meetings ago, I was asked to look into some of these issues with respect to the rock quarry. And when I was doing that, I probably don't know how to work that thing, but I'll try. I'll let the school teacher do it. Anyway, and as I came across that, something came up across my desk that I thought really fits into the situation we're in, and that's something that Dr. Sullivan Smith brought to the council, and I know all the council and the citizens were very concerned about that, and particularly Councilman Epps, and that is the bath salts and the plant food. Well, the city could not declare substances that were legal illegal, and so the state legislature did enact that law, and Governor Haslam signed it on May twenty-third, two thousand and eleven, and that's chapter number two-seventy-four of the Public Acts, that declared these bath salts illegal. So the state did take that action, and I know the attorney general for the state had seized some other things during that time, so the state is really the enforcing agent, agency on a lot of these issues, and that's really where we are on the rock quarry situation, and I've explained that before, but I'll go into some detail tonight. The quarry has been in existence since at least, I think, the thirties. Putnam County operated the quarry for many, many years. In nineteen eighty-four, fifty-nine residents of the Beverly Hills subdivision, the area around the rock quarry, a hundred and seven individuals filed suit against Putnam County for their operation of the rock quarry, as well as the, as well as the McCormick family that owned it, but the county was operating it. Some of the evidence that was introduced to the judge, and this is all in the court record, which is here for any member of the public that wants to have it, there were cracks in the foundation that caused a barn to fall, and rocks were thrown on a person's land. Large rocks were thrown into a garden and a driveway. A rock was thrown into a swimming pool, causing it to crack. A rock from the quarry came through the garage roof and burst the table. A rock was thrown ten feet from an individual's home. A flying rock struck and killed a calf, and a flying rock went through one resident's home and into their bathtub, which is very similar, I think, to the incident which we just had. So this is all back before nineteen eighty-four. And as a result of that lawsuit, Chancellor Neal was the judge, and he recused himself, and the state Supreme Court appointed Chancellor C. Allen High, who I think ultimately went on to the Court of Appeals to hear that case. And Chancellor High heard all of the evidence, that evidence that I just read to you and much more, from all of these landowners that had the same complaints, and this was against the county itself. And the chancellor ruled, and I've quoted this up here, and I'm just going to read part of his opinion, "The explosion of dynamite and blasting stone in the operation of the defendant's quarry, which causes rocks to be thrown upon plaintiffs' premises and sets up vibrations, causing houses to shake and vibrate, so as disturb and annoy plaintiffs and their families in the use and enjoyment of their home constitutes a nuisance." So he declared in nineteen eighty-five, this opinion was issued in July nineteen eighty-five, that the rock quarry at that time constituted a nuisance. And then he went on and held, "The defendants have a right to quarry stone on their property, and the plaintiffs enjoy the right of undisturbed use and possession of their houses. If these rights conflict, the rights of the defendants to operate the quarry must yield." In other words, the judge ruled that the quarry had to yield to the peaceful possession of these landowners and these homeowners with their property. And the judge ruled that the defendants, in this case, Putnam County, was operating a nuisance that had to be abated, and that meant it had to end. And the court then grants an injunction and orders the defendants to cease operating their quarry in such a way as to throw rocks on the plaintiffs' premises or jar the houses of plaintiffs to such an extent as to interfere with the comfortable and reasonable enjoyment of their homes. And that was the judge's ruling in July of nineteen eighty-five. And so I think Putnam County did kind of mend its ways then, but in two thousand, this property was annexed into the city, and I think the county had pretty well ceased doing business at that time, but when this property came into the city, this use was what's called grandfathered in under a Tennessee code, section, section thirteen, seven dash two-oh-eight, which basically means if you're operating a property, even though it was zoned, I think, residential, you can continue to operate that property the way it was before it became zoned. So they could continue to operate the quarry during that time. And the evidence that I have shows that the Cookeville Limestone began operating the quarry in two thousand and four, and of course, they're operating it today. Now... Now, what everybody needs to understand, and what I've said before, and I've put these statutes before you, the blasting that goes on at that quarry is controlled by the state of Tennessee. It's controlled by chapter 105 of Tennessee Code Annotated, which is codified in TCA 68-105 through 120. And that's a large section of the volume of the Tennessee Code. And it prescribes all manner of things with respect to blasting and all kinds of rules and regulations. These are actual state statutes that the quarry has to abide with. And in particular, in 1999, Governor Sunquist signed an order, a statute that said, "In the event of a notification of an accident where there's either property damage or personal injury of at least $5,000," which I'm sure this most recent incident that we're all familiar with would qualify, that at that point in time, once the state is notified, the blaster has to cease operations immediately and is prohibited from conducting any further blasting until such time as the department has invested, the department's investigation of the incident is completed. And the quarry is ordered to preserve the evidence when the accident occurs so that the department can complete the investigation. And there's a $500 penalty for each violation. So that's a state statute that we've read about here. Now, in addition to that, the blasting is delegated to the Department of Commerce and Insurance and the Division of Fire Prevention. And there's all manner of rules and regulations that the state has promulgated regarding blasting. And they're all codified in these rules and regulations, which we have here for people, if anybody wants copies of those as well. So the state has promulgated not only a significant number of statutes regarding the operation of blasting, but also the rules and regulations under that statute. And made the Department of Insurance and the Fire Prevention the enforcer for those statutes and rules and regulations. And on the website, the new website for the state of Tennessee is tn.gov. And on that website, there is a blasting complaint procedure that's set forth. And it says, and that's this procedure right here, and it's on the website of the state of Tennessee. And it says, "The Department of Commerce and Insurance State Fire Marshal's Office will conduct investigations into blasting complaints. If you have concerns regarding blasting in your area, contact the State Fire Marshal's Office at 615-741-7190." And it says, "The making, the identity of the person making the complaint will be kept confidential during the investigation, but becomes a public record once the investigation is complete." So the state has this procedure, and they invite people to make these complaints to these individuals for blasting itself. So the state controls both the blasting and the air quality. I think we've had some, I just read from that, the air quality. The operation of the quarry cannot be controlled by the City of Cookeville. It cannot be controlled by Putnam County, who, but it is controlled by the state of Tennessee and the Fire Marshal Office and the people from the state of Tennessee. Now, don't change it yet. So I know that this city council has taken these complaints of these citizens very, very seriously. And I know that Jim Shipley and James Mills have met with people from the Fire Marshal's Office to discuss the complaints of blasting. And it's my understanding that in the last several years, they have been cited for two, only two violations. I met with Jim Shipley and James Mills and the individual, I think his name is Jeff Cales, regarding the air quality control. And they were very conscientious about this. The quarry now has a permit from the state of Tennessee to continue, from an air quality control standpoint, to operate the quarry through 2018. And since 2006, they have had 14 complaints, but upon investigation, there were only three notices of violations that were issued. In fact, in actuality, the quarry is authorized to crush 500,000 tons of rock per year. Last year, they only crushed 175,000 tons, which was significantly lower because of the economy. But in 2009, they crushed 405,000 tons. So, but the state controls that. And this gentleman's name is Jeff Cales, and he's with the State of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. And then superimposed upon all that, the federal government has the Mine, Safety and Health Organization that also polices these individuals. So there's a layer from the state to the State Fire Marshal's Office, to the federal government, to the Department of Environment and Conservation, that actually is charged with policing these rock quarry operations, just like the one that we have here in Cookeville. And the City of Cookeville really just does not have the authority to do that. Now, I know that this council would very much like to remedy this situation, but as you can see, these very same complaints have been going on. And the rock quarry operation of Putnam County itself was held to be a nuisance, an injunction was issued, and they were ordered by the court to yield. Now, what can people do about this? First of all, you can file a formal complaint with the state. That's what they're here for. And it's like a lot of things in life, the greasy wheel gets the attention. And if enough citizens, if 107 people called down there, 59 landowners called down there, I'm sure they would pay a lot of attention to it. In this lawsuit, a lot of the homeowners had kept a log of the blasting incidents and what happened in each one, and that was part of the evidence the judge considered. So keep a log of the blasting and the air incidents, take photographs showing how thick the dust is, so you can show the people from the air quality control office who come and look. I know they said they had had several complaints about burning out there and came up, and there was no burning going on. So just this day in time, just about everybody has a digital camera. Take a picture so you can show the person, because the time he gets here from wherever he's stationed, the fire may be out or the dust may have settled. So take a photograph so you can show him. And then, just as these 59 landowners did in 1984, the citizens can band together and file a suit against this quarry, these quarry operators, just as was done against the county. And you'll have a hearing, and they can be dealt with by the judge. But the city just does not have the authority to stop that operation or to police that operation or to even find those people. So I know that's frustrating, and I know that the landowners and neighbors out there want some governmental agency to step up and help them, but it's just going to end up having to be the state of Tennessee, because they've enacted the statutes, they've enacted the rules and regulations, and they've dedicated two separate state agencies for that very purpose. And I know it can be frustrating, but it's something that just needs to be done. And if there's another serious incident where personal injury or $5,000 in property damage occurs, report that immediately, because they have to stop blasting until that is investigated by the state of Tennessee. And they're obligated to preserve that evidence. And I think this day and time in government, people know if you don't preserve evidence, you usually get in a lot more trouble than if you kept the evidence and just owned up to what it showed. So that would be my best recommendation to these landowners. I know that, I know it's frustrating, but that's really, that's the history of the quarry. And as you can see, it's had a very difficult history over the years and has even been, you know, sued one time by all the landowners in this community and was found guilty. So that can be done, and that is a remedy, and that's why we have courts and that's why we have judges. So I hope that the state will take care of this so that the landowners don't have to file suit. But I think that's really only the recourse that you have. If anybody wants to have any questions, I know I did not get a chance to meet with the people from the Fire Marshal's Office regarding the blasting. Maybe Mr. Shipley can give us a little more information about that meeting. But that's what the evidence shows, and all of this information is here for anybody in the public who wants it. And I think each council person has been given a copy of this book that has these statutes, rules, regulations, this lawsuit against the county, and the information from the website in it. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer those and discuss them.
Thank you, Mr. Rader. He's done, he and his office have done a tremendous amount of work, as you can see the size of our books that he's got ready for us. Actually, I think we have one for the press as well. But this stuff, of course, we have all the info if anybody needs it. So just let us know, and we can get it to you.
You know, sometimes I think with situations like this, sometimes it's hard to be good neighbors. You know, not necessarily because you don't want to be a good neighbor, but because of the nature of the situation. I've said this before, I live two blocks down from Tennessee Tech University, and I can tell you that that's a great boon to our economy, the TTU students and the professors and the university itself. And I'm certainly grateful it's located in Cookeville, Tennessee, and it's part of this great community. But I can tell you that when the Tennessee Tech students come back in August, they could be labeled as a nuisance also. And, you know, there are cars going up and down Dixie Avenue, you hear the fraternities and those kind of things. And I do know that Tennessee Tech has been a good neighbor, and that when the fraternities and students in general get out of control, if residents contact them, they follow through with it and help the residents. And I would hope and would sincerely want for the residents of this community to be able to talk with the limestone people, you know. And that's kind of hard to do because there's so much history there. But, you know, definitely, I can see both sides of this, you know.
Well, the judge said, and the judge ruled, and I believe a judge would rule today, that the operation of the quarry has to yield to the rights of the homeowners if it interferes with them. That was the ruling by Chancellor High in 1985. And I think if another lawsuit was brought and the same evidence was presented, that I think you'd end up with the same ruling, that the operation of the limestone has to yield to the right of these property owners to peacefully enjoy their home without rocks coming through their, into their yard, cracking their swimming pool, cracking the foundation, going into their home or going into their bathtub, like happened in 1980, before 1984.
And I think that a lot of the citizens, your frustration, a lot of times, especially in this situation, is because we don't know where to go, who to talk to, what to do, that sort of thing. And honestly, we didn't either until starting doing a little digging. And so I at least think a positive from this is you now have a process. You now know exactly where to go, what to do, and how to do it. And hopefully, that helps. It's just kind of up to you guys to do it now. But still, this is the part of the meeting where we're opening up the floor, so if anybody, all we do is ask to state your name, and if you could, keep it to three minutes.
I will. Name's Doug Hudgens, and I live up at Skyline Drive, and it was our home that had the rock go through the roof, so, and you got to see the rock here last month. Just a couple of comments. The State Fire Marshal has been to our home three times in the last six weeks or so. They were there three hours after the incident, so I have to give the State Fire Marshal's Office credit for responding quickly. An issue I want to bring up about the dust is a lot of the dust issues fall between the cracks. So Jeff Cales worries about the crusher. But there's still issues about the dust that's generated from the trucks operating or the drilling, you know, the general process of getting the rock out of the hill. And unfortunately, I haven't found anybody yet in state government that's willing to step up and say, "That's my problem. It falls between the cracks," some of the issues. And there are times, you know, we've had as much as a quarter of an inch of lime dust on our porches, covering the asphalt driveway to the point, it was white, not black. Often I have to, when I go to work, I have to turn on the windshield wipers, get the dust off the windshield so I can see the drive. That's a rather common occurrence. The other thing I would like to bring up here, I have here a copy of Cookeville Zoning Code, section 236. And it talks about, you know, a quarry operation must have 150 feet buffer zone between itself and nearby residential property, and that that buffer zone shall be planted with type 3 landscaping. And I don't see, now, who do we go to? This is a, unless what I have is invalid here, it says, you know, it says that the quarry has that responsibility. Who do we see to enforce that?
Unfortunately, the quarry was grandfathered in under the old law, and those new, all the new regulations about burms and plantings, just like the city and the county did out by the ambulance service for those neighbors that lived behind there, since that was a new building. The zoning code and the burms that were enforced then, they had to comply with to help shield that off. But this quarry use was there before, and it's grandfathered in, so all those new rules and regulations can't be enforced against them because they were there first and they had their use first. That's why you have, that's why the statute involved grandfathering exists, is you can't kind of put somebody out of business by later laws who was there first as part of the zoning. Zoning just has to yield to that.
Okay.
I mean, I wish, you know, I wish something could be done, but it just, you can't use, the grandfather clause supersedes that, really, preempts it.
I mean, that might be another, one thing that you could try to sit down with owners and ask them if they'd be willing to do a buffer zone of some kind. I mean, I mean, it could work, I don't know.
We've had some discussions. We'll see what happens. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I will say one other thing. I think Mr. Mills would want me to say this. That was, I know last, the last council changed the zoning in this area from RS 20 to QM for quarrying, because these people had applied to have that for an asphalt plant. Well, if they build the asphalt plant, since that will be a new operation, it will have to comply with those zoning regulations you just mentioned. Now, the quarry operation does not, but that new business operation will have to comply. And I know Mr. Mills thought that actually by changing that zoning and bringing them under the new zoning law that would require the very things you just mentioned for this new operation, would actually give another layer of protection to those owners that they wouldn't have, because the quarry is actually able to expand and fill up its entire property line. And if they don't use that, but put something else there that comes into this zoning, a new and different business, then the zoning rules do, the new zoning rules do apply to that. So you'd get the, so the landowners could do that, and the city could enforce that, because that would be a new business at that same location.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm Ann Ruth Burrows, and y'all know why I'm here. Dan, I appreciate all the work that you did very much, and you also spoke to Jeff Jones.
And he called me, I did.
Yes, and I appreciate that very much. But what, one thing I don't understand is, the previous council ramrodded this right through. I mean, there was nothing, they didn't care about anything or anyone, or this would not have happened like this. So I think it could have been handled in a better manner than what it was, and that's exactly what happened, that it was just ramrodded through. And Mrs. Anderson, you were part of that council. So unless you live out there and you put up with this on a daily basis, you have no idea. And have any of you been out to the quarry?
Yes, I have been.
Yes, I have.
And you've been back in the back where the quarry is?
Yes.
It's something to see, that's most definitely for sure. And Dan, you were going to check about tarping. Apparently, Chief Terry says there is no law here in the city about that. You were going to check about that, and I think Jim, you said something about that as well.
Yeah, I have not found anything, but I will keep looking. I've seen many asphalt trucks in the last week or so, and they all have tarps on them. I know that Chief Terry called the people at the Department of Transportation in Nashville, and they told him there was no rule or regulation they knew about that required tarping. I looked at the state statute, and I did not see one. But I will, I will look at that again, Ms. Burrows. But I do have to take up a little bit for the former council, because the quarry operation itself was there, and that change in zoning did not change, did not, it did not, and it was there before I-
was there before I, well, I still had hair on my head, okay? But, but, but the-
I wasn't there when it-
But the, so that change in zoning didn't have anything to do with what's, the operation that's going on right now. It only would have effect if they put the asphalt plant in, which has not happened yet. So the operation you're talking about that's going on right now is the same thing that these people in this lawsuit in 1984 were complaining about. It's exactly the same operation, and it's been a frustration since, since at least this long for people just like the Hudgens family. And you could go through the list of all these families that filed this lawsuit and the people who had the rock end up in their bathtub and the people who killed, whose calf was killed. So, I mean, it, the, but that's the quarry operation, so what the council did could, did not affect the actual quarry operation. I'll take up for my schoolteacher friend here.
I just feel like if the city can't do anything and the state can't do anything, the county can't do anything, the fire marshal only controls the blasting, that's all he does. He doesn't do anything else.
Well, the state is charged with the enforcement of the blasting operation-
Right.
Both with respect to the blasting, with respect to the operation of the quarry, and with respect to the operation of the air. And that is their job, and under the state statutes and the state regulations, they're the ones who are charged with that responsibility. And the city, David Andrews can't do it any more than Chief Terry can do it. You know, I mean, that's just, that's just who's in charge, it's the state of Tennessee.
And you spoke that you would try to see about getting the council to pass a law that they would have to tarp the trucks in the city.
I can look at that.
Well, we are, we are-
But you did talk about that.
But first-
There are some-
He didn't want rock falling out on his convertible.
That's true. But there's, a golf ball almost hit me the other day, too. There's, number one, from what I understand, the big, the biggest culprit coming off of that mountain uncovered is Putnam County trucks, from what I understand.
Well, I've spoken to Randy about that as well.
And-
To no avail, it didn't do any good.
Well, if the county commission would pass a resolution that required the county's own trucks to do that, then that would take care of that by itself.
But then my understanding is if they, they can't do that because this is city coming out of the city.
But you could do it for your county trucks.
Just like, just like we take, we can control the city vehicles on how we use, how the city uses the patrol cars or the electric trucks or things like that, the county can control how the county road department uses their trucks. And if they want to pass a internal rule at the road department that all the trucks who carry gravel or carry asphalt or carry any loose debris will be tarped, that would be an internal county policy that will at least take care of the county trucks that are taking care of the gravel.
Well, since you have spoken with Jeff about this matter, I would encourage you to speak with him about this matter as well.
Well, I'll certainly do that. I'll be more than happy to do that. We want to try to find a solution to this problem, but our jurisdiction is just limited. And I, you know, I would, you know, I wish we could, I wish we had a lot more legal authority than we really do, but we, but the city-
Well, you seem to have that for a lot of other things, so it's a pity that people can't be kept safe and enjoy their home.
Well, I mean, I don't know what to say, you know, the city is the city, the county commission is the county commission, the sheriff's department's the sheriff's department, the police department's the police department. We all have to work together, but we all have limits on the things that we can do. And the state, this is an area that the state is responsible for. It's not an area that the city is responsible for anymore than it's an area necessarily that the county's responsible for. So, you know, I, you know, I hope that you will contact Ryan Williams and Charlotte Burks and whoever other, Charles Curtis, whoever the other representatives are, John Mark Wendell over in Livingston, and get them to get the state to, you know, to do this. I mean, they're the people who are, that's the people who are responsible is the, is the people in state government. And, you know, you don't have a more sympathetic group than the, than the city council or myself, and I know Jeff Jones is sympathetic toward you, and Chancellor C. Allen Hy, when it was the county itself that was guilty of the nuisance, ordered the county not to do it. So this has been, it's been frustrating everybody for a long, long time, and apparently there has been no satisfactory solution even up until today, but it's still the state's responsibility.
Well, I want to tell you again, I appreciate all the effort that you have put forth doing this. It, I don't know if it's given us a lot of insight or not, or helped any of that matter, but I'm sure Doug would like a copy of all those records that you have.
They're here, they're here, I think-
I've got them all.
Jim has them, has all of these for you. You know, they all say misery loves company. Well, these people were just as miserable as you were. And that doesn't, that doesn't make you feel any better or solve your problem right now, but it just goes to show that there's just no simple solution. There's just no simple solution to this problem.
Let me just say something, because I deal with this all the time, and when I deal with healthcare, I mean, I know this, a lot of this sounds like bad news, and I can sense a frustration in your voices and just because it seems like a lot of, there's not any opportunities, there's no, there's nothing we can do, but I, at least, at least knowing, at least knowing this information gives you opportunity for, a new opportunity for action. I mean, instead of, instead of having to come here to the city council all the time, which we are sympathetic, and I really am glad that we've had the chance to go through all this, you know you don't need to keep banging your head over here with us because-
Well, we probably will.
Well, you know, and we'd love to, we'd love to have you, but, but that's not going to remedy your problem. And it's kind of like I tell patients, I mean, if they have a, if they have a health, health problem and they know treatment A is not helping, and there's opportunity for treatment B, you go to treatment B. You don't need to keep doing treatment A because this is not going to help. So it's really, and even though I know this sounds frustrating and maybe sound like bad news, it really is, gives you an opportunity for action. It lets you know that Mr. Rader has given you phone numbers, has given you kind of a process you can look at. And, you know, if we can help out anymore, we certainly, we certainly will, but I don't think it's, this cloud is nearly as black as it seems.
It's pretty cloudy.
And I know it looks that way. And then you have, you've experienced that with, in the healthcare situation, too. So I think, I know you can understand that, Anna Ruth. So I would just encourage you to look at this as an opportunity to get, to get going in the right direction to help solve the problem. And anything that the city can do, if we can continue to help, if we can look at tarping ordinances or things like that, I would be, as a city councilman, I'd be very happy to look at that.
That would be a little help, but it won't-
And we'll look at that. And you've heard Mr. Shipley already mentioned that, so we will do that. So we'll continue to do, be diligent on our end, but at least, at least right now, your community knows that you don't need to keep banging your head with treatment A. You could go, you could try treatment B, and hopefully you'll, you'll see some results from that. I hope and pray you do, I really do, so.
As I said, Jim, Mr. Hudgens would like one of those, and so would I.
I've got a lot of it here in the conference room, I'll get it to you after the meeting.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Burrows. Yes, sir.
May I ask one more question?
Sure, sure.
I have in front of me here the grandfather clause, and I'll just read a couple sentences from it. "To the change in zoning provided that there is a reasonable amount of space for such expansion on the property owned by such industry or business situated within the area which is affected by the change in zoning so as to avoid nuisances to adjoining landowners." I guess what I'm hearing is that we've got to go to the state to define what is a nuisance. Is that what you're telling me, that there's no remedy here within the city of Cookeville to define what is a nuisance? And I've had a couple people from the city say, "Look, they can come right to your property line and drop a 200-foot cliff, you know, that's, that, nothing you can do about that."
Well, you're correct. In Chancery Court, the Chancery Court of Putnam County declares nuisances. That's their jurisdiction, and that's why we have Chancery Court. Ron Thurmond is the current chancellor. Vernon Neal was the chancellor here. He recused himself because he knew a lot of the landowners. And then Judge Hale, who was the circuit judge, recused himself, and they appointed this other judge. But it's the Chancery Court that does declare nuisances, and they declared this a nuisance and ordered the county to stop doing this. And you'll see that in the papers that you have, that Mr. Shipley's going to give to you. And the 13-7-208 is a very, very broad statute. In fact, last week, the Jefferson County tried to put a rock quarry out of business that hadn't been operating for several years, and the chancellor agreed and put them out of business, and they appealed to the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals said no. They could still stay in business under the grandfather clause because it was a mining operation, and they were allowed to wait until the economy turned around and their material they were mining was more valuable. Called it diminishing asset law. So lots of, this is nothing new, but the grandfather clause is very well entrenched in Tennessee law, and they were there and their operation was there before it ever became annexed into the city in 2000. And so they can just stay there. They're entitled to stay on that. They can't go, they can't go buy any other land and expand, but they can expand within the boundaries of the property that they own.
Okay.
Yeah. Unless the court orders them otherwise because of a nuisance.
Dan, I'd like, thank you for the homework you did there. Thank you, sir.
You know, I just wish that I could wave a magic wand and solve this, but it's, you know, the state of Tennessee really can, they can't put the quarry out of business, but they can control their conduct with their rules and their regulations. They can affect environmental laws, they can affect blasting laws that circumscribe when they can blast, what they can do, how big their charges are, and things like that that can materially affect their operation of their business and whether it's profitable or not. The city of Cookeville can't do that. Putnam County can't do that. The state of Tennessee can do that.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Counsel?
About the quarry or moving on?
Oh, just moving on about-
Okay. I was going to remind everybody about the concerts in the park on Sunday afternoons and also the community band. I attended last, this past Monday night's community concert, and it was beautiful and just great seeing all the trees come into Dogwood Park. And I saw that Rick left, but from my best estimation, it looked like there were about 500 people there, and I thought that was pretty great. And then during June, at 2:00 on Sunday afternoons, there also is a free concert in Dogwood Park. And while the weather's pretty, we all need to take advantage of that.
And on the latter side, I will say that on June the 10th, Governor Haslam signed a new statute that would, whenever the city council would like to sell wine at the Drama Center or the Performing Arts Center and at Dogwood Park, the city now has the ability to do that.
That's good.
I'd like to make a few comments because we've been working on the budget, and I wrote some notes this afternoon. Last week, I had the privilege of attending an elected officials academy sponsored by the University of Tennessee, better known as M Task. And since my background definitely was not in government before being elected, I've attended two of these academies, and attendance has greatly helped my ability to identify the purpose, the function, and the responsibilities of our city and how it works, effectively giving services to the citizens of Cookeville. While learning, I listen to other city mayors, councilmen discuss their cities and their problems. While I think every city in Tennessee is probably a better place to live and work as compared to other regions of the United States, I'm especially grateful for living in Cookeville. We read and we hear people talking of government being too big and ineffective. I think this is probably true on the national level, but here on a local level, I believe our city is very well-run financially. This is due in a large part to the effective leadership of our city manager and the different department heads. Their fiscal leadership should be acknowledged and praised. What we find in our city and our department heads, that they are producing a measurable and positive outcome. They put priorities on when times are not so good and stay in line when times are good, avoiding debt impossible, and being very careful with our tax dollars. Our city is being run in the most effective and efficient way that we can find possible, but we realize there is always room for improvement. We at the city need to remember that when the public thinks of what the city does for them, that they never notice it when the services are working correctly, but it is the first thing they notice when they are not working. So I'm going to do my part to ensure that the services that the city provides do work. Thank you.
Two quick notes. Found out today that this increase in sales tax collections, we're up 7% from this time last year. And year-to-date, we're up a little over 3% in collection of sales tax, so that's a good thing.
It is.
It could be a lot worse, and I'm sure it is other places.
And hence, thanks.
And lastly but not least, I want to congratulate Captain Roger Fuquay, because that's the last time we'll call him Captain Roger Fuquay. He is now the fire chief. It is Chief Roger Fuquay. Congratulations. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.